Good afternoon. Called the briefing meeting to order. There are four items plus public comment. Let's get started with the Student Board Advisory Committee report from Mr. Will Holderfield. We're very excited to have you here.
Thank you.
Come on up and tell us what you've done this year. Yes, please.
I just wanted to start that off first. A little speech that I gave Ms. Fisher before I started. And it basically says, "I would like to thank the board for your time taking individually." Let me restart there. "Let me thank you for taking time out of your individual, hard, busy schedules for letting me come up here to speak before, on the behalf of our council." I want to say that our council has had a little bit, we had a short time than our regular committees usually do this year, but I want to say that our committee acted very well under the circumstances. We actually had more, we had more recommendations and more actual accomplishments than I figured we would. We actually had more than I believed in last year's committee did, which I sat on. But I would like to, I would like to go over accomplishments first that our committee has done, and then I will go over what we would like to recommend to next year's committee, and then what we would like to recommend to the board. All right. So, the first thing of our accomplishments, we have increased involvement in schools, implemented improving reporting options to schools for mental health, substance abuse, and bullying concerns, and became involved in school safety improvements, which we met our new safety director of the district. And then we identified gender gap and dress code, and identified need for district-wide consistency in enforcing code of conduct. Those were basically our main accomplishments we did this year. We had other accomplishments, but we thought these were the most important ones that we went over this year. And now our recommendations to the committee for the future student advisory committee is to split the groups depending on topics and attendance and some meetings, and discussing that beforehand. So, giving them an email beforehand. And also, to extend the meetings by 15 minutes to give icebreakers, so we can really get everybody to know one another. I think that really helps to improve the meeting, that everybody knows, everybody, I'm sure how the board knows, everyone out and in the board. So, we thought that would be a big improvement. Another recommendation would be school launches and dietary accommodations, which we talked about our last two meetings. We thought that would be very important to talk, for the next advisory committee to talk about and see what they can come up with to improve in our schools. Evaluating regular high school days and field trip workshops for incoming freshmen. So, basically, having a day right at towards the end of the school year, about as right now, where we have freshmen come into high schools, their eighth grade year envision, and do basically an orientation, basically an open house, but on days during the day, so they realize how the hallways, how the hallways are, which way they need to go, what basically, the basic rhythm, and how they're going to do their everyday life in a high school. Our next, let's see. And that will complete our next year's committee recommendations. Now, our recommendations for the school board. We actually have provided a lot this year that we find very important for you guys to speak on and talk about. Our first recommendation would provide consistency district-wide in code of conduct, so dress code. Our next one would be school safety, do mental health survey, allowing access to school counselors, educate students and staff regarding social media usage, appropriateness and restrictions, students' participation in safety surveys. So, basically, getting the school, students involved, and basically making sure they know what's going on during an emergency crisis in the school, in case we have some sort of emergency that would take place in their school. Provide voter registration education during orientation, civics, or U.S. government class. So, basically, give them the overall meaning of what it is to be a voter, and what it takes when you turn 18. Let's see. Provide for teachers evaluation done by students with parents to allow for better accommodation. So, have a, basically, a little survey with teachers and parents, with parents and students to basically get their thoughts on how their teachers are teaching them in class, what they feel is important, what they feel isn't important, to kind of guide them in the right direction. Let's see. Standardized testing, FSA, EOC should be determined if it should be, determine if it should be, you pass or fail, or should have to stay another year in high school because you didn't pass your EOC your freshman year in biology. Another one would be providing opportunities for the students to prepare for testing while addressing individual differences, multiple intelligences, and a different learning style. So, basically, how to, how do we with the gifted students, prepare them for testing different from regular students? And then, provide high school career education, scholarship information, and better access to school counseling. So, basically, getting our sophomore, freshman through 12th graders, basically more involved in learning of what they need in order to get a scholarship, and how to basically get into college, an easier way to get in college, community college, any type of form of that. And then, eighth grade education orientation programs for high school, which is basically, I think I said beforehand, maybe I did not, I think that was the last one. But basically, what I said before, give students a rough meaning of what it is to be a high school freshman, and basically, how to deal with being one, and how to get to your next classroom on time, and other forms like that. And the final recommendation I have for the school board is review school lunch programs with regards to dietary accommodations. We had one student write a survey, I mean, write a letter to our board a few weeks, our last board meeting, I believe, to discuss information on maybe creating like a salad bar, or some sort of that, for kids that can't really eat the regular lunch meals in regular school days, so they can have something more appetizing to them, instead of something they really can't eat whatsoever. And that's my final recommendation for the 2017, 2018 Student Advisory Committee. I want to, on the behalf of the Student Advisory Committee, I want to thank you guys for, let me come up and speak to you today, and thank you for letting me represent my school and be the parliamentarian for my second term. Thank you, guys.
Awesome. Will, will you hang out there for a second in case we have questions or comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Board members?
Okay.
I know Mary's going to say something.
Well, I just want to thank Will and the other students for being so dedicated, coming to the meetings, identifying issues and concerns, and also for providing us with some potential solutions. So, I thought that that was really good. And we enjoyed having you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Even though you told the superintendent when he could stop talking as the parliamentarian, but that's just one of our jokes. But we, we have learned a lot from you, and we take your recommendations seriously, and we look forward to you applying for next year, because I know you're going to be a senior next year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Will, what is a dress, a gender gap and dress code? What is that?
One of our students, I believe, three meetings ago, so, in February, brought up that they had certain dress code issues during, I would say during dances, I believe it was. So, identifying what is appropriate for male and female. They felt that females had more, more dress codes than a student would during dance. So, how the males could wear khakis and a dress collar shirt, while the females couldn't have, while the males were also wearing all types of things, they were actually not in their dress code that they didn't follow, while the females were being very taxing on the way they were dressed. So, they had to have a knee length, they had no noodle strap and other things like that. And one of ours, and several of our students thought it was very important that we addressed that matters to both sides of gender, not just the one, and make sure that it's being actually followed, instead of loosely followed.
Great. And then, I want to make two comments about you. The first is, a lot of adults come to these microphones during meetings and are sort of frozen with fear and intimidation in their ability to present to the board. You have conducted yourself like a very well-experienced speaker, public speaker. You really did great. And the second thing is, Mary, Ms. Fisher, what you just said about coming to us with solutions. We're all out in the community right now, educating on the half penny sales tax, and frequently, when I face opposition, I ask, "Okay, what is your solution? You can't bake sale your way out of a $478 million need. What is your solution?" They don't have solutions. You and your cohort of students have worked hard to not just identify problems and complain about them, but offer actual solutions. And I'm very, very appreciative for that approach. It takes a level of maturity that many of the adults in our community don't have.
I would also like to note that this is my second year on it, and I'm not pointing that out, because it's amazing a thing to do, really. But I also want to point out how well the board, our committee actually handled everything this year. They were, I think, in my two years, I think this was the best committee I've been on. I mean, they're really well-informed, they have facts, they even actually had me actually do my duties one time, and actually fact-checked them to make sure they were correct, because I had never heard of something before, which was outstanding, really. But I want to thank everybody, and I hope that most of the members of next year's board are on again, because it was really interesting to see.
Great. Is it appropriate to clap for him? Can we do that? Please? Because you're awesome. Thank you, Will.
All right, thank you.
Very impressive.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next up on the agenda, we have Dr. Bohatch, Mr. Mangan. It looks like Dr. Creel.
Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Martin, Dr. Atkins, I'm here with Mr. Mangan and Harbaugh, Dr. Creel. Any questions related to proposed provisions of the code of conduct?
And so are questions.
Members?
I have one.
And I don't have the page number written down, but it was a long page of a lot of red, with a lot of different, if you bear with me for a second, I'll be able to find it. It's not the, not the page with categories of like, mean, all the way up to bullying.
Flow chart?
I don't know. What page is that on?
Thirty-two.
Let me get there. No. It's after that.
Do I go into board manager?
Yeah.
After it?
Before it. I thought it was right around.
Oh, I think it's before, all right. I don't think I have. This way.
Is it the bullying chart?
I think it's before level one. Hang on. This one? Forty-five?
Thank you for being patient with me. Whole lot of stuff on here, obviously, that we hadn't, I had never seen before. And it seems to me like a lot of this is restorative practices, but then we have restorative practices listed on the bottom. So, is this something different from what we've been training our teachers to do, number one? Number two, are our teachers receiving training on all of these? Because these seem pretty complicated to me.
So, as we prepare for the 2018, 2019 school year, knowing that we've discussed the implementation of the positive behavior supports, this really is in preparation for that. Restorative justice is a piece of that work, but as we implement the positive behavior piece, we want to have in, in writing, some of the options that might be available for our teachers to use, and to encourage that. And yes, ma'am, we will be having training. We have training coming up in July for schools that have not been a part of the positive behavior supports. We will have training in the fall for schools that have been a part. And so, this is ongoing participation as we roll out this positive behavior support system for the upcoming school year.
Okay. That makes a lot more sense.
Really making sure that we put inside our code of conduct possibilities for people to look and have as examples.
Okay. Calling it PBS makes a lot more sense to me. Cool. Any other questions? Comments? Okay. You guys are good, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a big document.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Ms. Lori Brooks, Mrs. Sue Zellers, and Mrs. Lori Houchen. Or not all of you?
Sue has retired, so she's not with us.
Okay. That's right. So, Dr. Creel.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Hi there.
Today, we're briefing on the Student Progression Plan and Secondary Course Catalog. It's our annual review and update. As in the past few years, this is a combined document of the Student Progression Plan, the Middle School Course Catalog, and the High School Course Catalog. The Course Catalog section describing all of the courses available for use by middle schools and high schools in their master schedules for next year. As you already know, the Student Progression Plan and Course Catalog includes academic policies and courses that are aligned to state statutes, state Board of Education rule, and FLDOE updates. State Course Code Directory is also included as a resource, and of course, the end result is that these courses are then selected by schools and scheduled into the master schedule using the Focus Scheduling System. We have minimal updates to the document this year. There's one update to the Middle School section, where we included this year, under the Middle School Grading System, language that describes for parents the exact calculation of final course grades that include an end-of-course assessment. Because that calculation, as you know, is an annual course grade, where the EOC is factored in as 30% of the annual course grade. So, it's slightly different, and we thought it would be nice for parents to have greater detail in that, on that topic. The High School section also includes, on the High School Grading System, the same calculation algorithm, but as it relates to the 30% in a high school annual course grade. And then, we updated the standard diploma options to reflect the newly updated State Board of Education rule, as it relates to alternative assessments to meet the 10th grade ELA test and the Algebra I end-of-course assessment. So, we've had comparative and concordant scores on various assessments, and approximately every five years, it seems, but it also relates back to when our actual state assessment iterations change, the State Board of Education does a comparative and concordant score study for how students may use the SAT, ACT, PERT, and now PSAT, to earn alternative scores to bypass the 10th grade English Language Arts Assessment, or the Algebra I, and the Algebra I EOC for their standard diploma. So, those updates have been added to this document. That's the extent of our updates, so do you have any questions for us?
Ms. Morgan?
So, I know this isn't in your progression plan, but I saw the title, Middle School Grading System, and the alarm bells went off, because, you know, we've had comments about the fact, about how we grade in middle schools, and it's not really addressed in here, other than to put forward this, this system of integrating the EOC results. So, what is the answer to the question?
So, I believe that the answer to the question about the grading is that, as we move towards a, as we move towards implementing standards-based instruction, through ensuring through our curriculum maps and our instructional guides, that we are following the standards that are aligned with each grade level and each content. That our need for the upcoming school year is to conduct committees and reviews and studies on the grading practices.
Good.
I think that including it in a student progression plan is not the way for us to go about this. I believe that this is a year-long process, as we work with students, and parents, and teachers, and administrators, to have an ongoing discussion this year, so that as we prepare honestly for the 1920 school year, that we could have some district-wide practices in place, that we could present and move forward from a grading process. I know that we are working to have consistency with that, but this is a huge endeavor, and it will require for us working together to create buy-in on all fronts. I mean, it's not just about what grades we have and what we take in a class, it's also about looking at our report cards, and how all of that might possibly look different. So, this is a huge topic of conversation for us this upcoming school year.
Awesome. That's great. That's great. Because I loved Linda Mary's explanation, but, you know, I know that that's not something that's going to look good in the press. Anyway, page 35. Graduation requirements. Students entering ninth grade must pass, must pass the Grade 10 ELAFSA, or earn a passing concordant score. So, what, and I, so what you were saying earlier is, we don't know what the concordant score is yet, so that's why you've struck this out, and we just say there is a concordant score?
We actually do have the updates, and because they are cohort-specific, on, I have to look at the page, but we did add a page with a table that details, it's directly beyond that chart, yes, on the very next page. It details by cohort the scores that a student may earn to qualify for a standard diploma.
Okay. Maybe if you just referenced the chart, it would, it would help, because I read the whole way through this, and then, I didn't, I didn't realize there was a relationship between the two. Okay. Great. Thanks. And then, on page 257. What is a Florida international, international baccalaureate physics class? What makes it Florida?
I'm just going to go to page 257.
Five-seven.
Oh, and actually, our page numbers are different. Depending, it's where it is on your, your agenda, and I have the full document open. Is it the International Baccalaureate chart?
No. It's, it's 20038360, Florida International Baccalaureate Physics I. It's consistent with the Physics I course, but they explore it in greater depth as preparatory work for the IB physics course. But I didn't know what, does Florida now have a?
That's for the, I have the page now. It's a course description, and that should be International Baccalaureate Physics I, instead of the word Florida, but it may be the way it's posted in our C-Poms resource from the Department of Education. I will research that, and ensure if Florida is not in the course title, it's removed, because it does look like an anomaly.
Okay. Because I just, I didn't, I thought IB was just IB.
That is correct.
All right. Okay. That answers my question's very picky, but thank you.
No, I appreciate it. And we will put a reference to the assessment chart on the page prior, and anywhere it's referenced. Thank you for that.
Any other discussion? Speaking of picky, I noticed the level of detail you guys went into when you poured and combed through this document. You changed the word consumption to utilization of art materials. I mean, I read that, and I was like, who reads with that level of detail? Anyways, I feel like our students are in really good hands with, with that kind of eye toward.
I was in C-Poms, and I was just like, what? So, yeah.
It was really, it was really good. All right. If there's no further discussion, thank you, ladies.
Can I just say, reiterate what you just said? This is a document that has had tremendous amount of work that's gone in, and the articulation between not only what happens with our students, but how that looks with our colleges, and the dual enrollment pieces, and all of that, it's really, a tremendous amount of effort has gone in from these ladies, and I really appreciate it very much.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Good afternoon.
We're here today, and I want to thank you for having us here for this briefing. We're here today to update you on safety and security, which happens to be one of the hotbeds going on right now. Ever since Parkland, and really ever since the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Act, a lot of things have changed in our community, in our schools, in our nation. And so we've had to make some adjustments. We've been meeting with city and county officials, we've been meeting with community members, we've been meeting with vendors to come up with different aspects of our SRO program, of our school hardening, of threat assessment, student supervision, and all the different things that goes with safety and security. So without further ado, I'm going to let Mr. Parfit go over some of these changes, some of the things we're going to do, and he's been a breath of fresh air coming into our district and helping us understand what we need to do to keep our children safe. Because if our children don't feel safe, they can't learn. So, Mr. Parfit.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Dr. Atkins, Mr. Martin. As Mr. Demick said, I just want to update you on where we're at on school safety and security and threat assessment teams, especially in relationship to the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Act, I'll just refer to it as Public Safety Act, and some of the relevance to the school district and the relevance to safety and security of our schools. Of course, the first area of that was an office created by the Florida Department of Education, the Office of Safe Schools, which will benefit us tremendously because it will be establishing best practices, offer compliance oversight, and technical assistance on a lot of these matters. It will also develop some training programs, in particular for what is titled a School Safety Specialist appointed by the superintendent. They are updating a school security risk assessment tool, which is known as the Florida Safe School Assessment Tool. This instrument has actually been used in the past, it's just being updated by the Office of Safe Schools. And part of this risk assessment will involve our office, our safety and security, to make assessments of the schools in conjunction with our public safety partners, and that meaning in particular law enforcement, and as moving forward also with, obviously with FIRE, EMS, and those agencies as well, making recommendations. Once these, each school has the assessment completed, the assessments will be compiled, and the board will be given recommendations by safety and security as to where we should be going, where we should be moving ahead regarding safety and security. The School Safety Specialist provided for in this act also has some other areas of responsibility, including levels of training that this individual has to have or at least provide for. And it's probably unusual in the safety, security aspect, because a lot of it's going to involve even mental health. Lori just spoke, Amy Clark also with the district are very instrumental in providing that piece of this training and moving forward with providing trainers for youth mental health awareness, which is a key component also of this act. And it's training all personnel at our district in youth mental health awareness. And it goes beyond just the typical, what we would think of as mental health awareness, but issues that are confronting our students today related to depression, suicide, drug abuse, those types of things also. The act further clarifies and adds responsibilities for emergency drills and emergency procedures, and adds in particular that drills conducted for active shooters and hostage situations. It's actually a shame that we sit here in a school board meeting talking about training kids in active shooters, but unfortunately, that's the reality today. This training that we're looking at will have to be provided by the local law enforcement, and I'll talk about the SROs in a minute, but moving forward, we'll be dealing with probably four law enforcement agencies representing school resource officers for our district. But the drills add some additional responsibilities for active shooter hostage situations in training. And we want to make sure that those drills are age-appropriate, it's not a cookie cutter type of a drill that you would prepare, that you're going to drill a kindergartner versus a high school senior. So we have to look at those aspects. Some of the procedures of notification will include things like weapon use, hostage, active shooter, hazardous material or toxic chemical, of course, weather emergencies, and even man-made emergencies. Again, a lot of things that a generation ago, we didn't see in our school system. The policies, it provides the policies will be established, and in this case, it will be more likely, some of them need to be tweaked, because we actually have a lot of the policies and procedures in place related to violence prevention on our schools, in particular bullying, harassment. It was mentioned earlier about the Positive Behavior Support, another system in the school district here, that is a positive aspect going forward when we talk about safety and security. One of the things that we will be bringing forward will be a manual for threat assessment teams, and by law, the, every school has to have a threat assessment team by this fall. And it doesn't, the statute doesn't provide a lot of guidance as to the composition and necessarily what that team will involve, but the research is well in place for us to move forward with that. We're looking again with Lori and Amy on funding a trainer program, hopefully this summer, that we can actually train facilitators, approximately two dozen of our own folks, to become trainers for threat assessment teams. The teams at each school would be comprised generally of an administrator, being a principal or an assistant principal, a school counselor, psychologists, a school resource officer, possibly the school security specialist, and maybe others. It would be a core group of individuals that would meet on a regular basis relating to concerning behaviors, problem behaviors that are being exhibited. And the best part of the threat assessment approach is that it allows, it will allow us, with this team approach, this team would, for example, set somebody to basically be the case manager of that particular case, and there would be some follow-up. You know, we hear so much in the news, and we've heard in the news over the years, and I don't even like to say it, but the individuals slip through the cracks. And they don't, they really don't. People miss things, they weren't aware that there was information out there. The statute does provide that a number of agencies in the state and the schools must provide information relative to this. So again, it'll be educating some of those community partners, government agencies, in providing information to us on these teams, because, again, the teams are only going to be as effective as the information that they have. This, along with, the threat assessment teams will work in conjunction with the district officials related to counseling, behavioral health crisis resources, and again, Lori's folks are looking at community partners and adding staff, psychologists, but also adding connections that we have with community partners, contracts that we have with community partners to help in those situations. There are going to be some policy changes, things that are going to be necessary to establish the threat assessment teams. One thing that the statute does not provide for, actually, is any type of oversight of a threat assessment team, for example. My suggestion is that the board, when adopting this, provide the superintendent the ability to create some type of, either, my suggestion would be a district threat assessment team, because we have to have one for each school, we could have a district threat assessment team. The nice thing about this act, which I saw, it does not limit its oversight to students. In a lot of cases, we think, well, the threat assessment team will deal with student behavior, and in most cases, it will. But the statute allows for individuals, for us to involve with individuals. So unfortunately, employees can also have problems and issues that a threat assessment team may be important in helping to resolve. So my suggestion would be that we appoint a district team with oversight of the school teams, and also to have the ability to deal with concerning employee behavior and concerns One of the other things that the act does provide for, and it's yet to be seen because the Office of Safe Schools is to develop this, but hopefully, it will be in place by fall, and it's called Fortify FL, Fortify Florida. It will be a mobile app that will allow not only students, but the community, to report concerning behavior. One of the things we hear every time a deadly situation occurs or tragedy occurs, we always hear, at least in the news, that people knew things, people didn't report things. So we have to have these avenues that they can do this. This mobile app, Suspicious Activity Reporting App, will allow individuals to report their concerns, their behaviors, even anonymously. So I think it's another step in the right direction. I mentioned the Safe Schools Assessment Tool. We're right now in just webinar training on that, and again, you will see more on that come this fall, when a report will be submitted to the board on the findings of those assessments. Couple of things locally that have changed or updated. The school safety plan that was put into place before I came here, with especially an important provision of a student supervision protocol, a very effective protocol that's actually in place by each school principal, and they identify hotspots, potential problem areas in their school, and they come up with supervision protocols, for example, just, you know, in the morning during drop-offs, you know, who is at the parent drop-off, who's at the bus drop-off, those kind of responsibilities, before classes start, in between classes, those kinds of things are important parts of student safety and security. And it was updated, and again, that will be updated annually as moving forward. Our hurricane preparedness procedures have been updated, it's in its final draft, and working with the Lee County Emergency Management, I think we'll have a better grasp of responsibilities moving forward, especially since 10 or 11 of our schools will be shelters, in our shelters. The hardening of the schools, another term that you hear, single point of entry, things that we're working on, and we have been looking probably for the last month and a half on the, a provision of a technology, a single point of entry, that would allow, once school classes begin, schools' doors are locked, somebody would not have to maintain a presence at a front door, or to leave a door unsecured and unlocked. It would allow the technology that's there to have the audio/video capability of somebody at the front desk that can communicate and grant access to individuals, guests, visitors coming to the school. So the schools can be locked, and we don't have to allow folks in until then. Couple other things that are continually working on are things like the crime prevention through environmental design, or what you hear as SEP-TED, especially with the new schools, and you've been to the Benita High School, some of those provisions have already been put in place. The closed-circuit TV integration with access control, especially with our information system, integration systems here in our technology department are moving forward. The technology there is important. And lastly, I'll finish up the school resource officers, and as Mr. Demick said, we've been working with agencies in the community, and we're working on finalizing agreements with the City of Cape Coral Police Department, the City of Fort Myers Police Department for SROs. As you know, the county is only funding the SROs for the unincorporated areas, so it's left a void, and a problem for those agencies are, would be obviously staffing. We're talking about adding probably close to 40 officers, and these agencies don't have those kind of folks. But both of them have made commitments to us that they will be there, and they will be protecting our schools. And questions?
Members? Ms. Fisher?
So on the training that's to take place, is there a specific timeline? Because as I read through, I saw that that was not really indicated, that there's reporting deadlines, and there's things to be done within one year, but is there a timeline, for instance, for the school security person training and/or the mental health and behavioral training?
Yes, the School Safety Specialist, the training would have to be within a year. And the youth mental health awareness, the Office of Safe Schools has not really defined a program. Again, Lori and her folks have researched and found that there are some programs out there that may allow us. There's a program called Mental Health First Aid that's a very effective program, but it's an eight-hour program. It's a lot harder to get folks trained. So there, some of these programs are actually looking at adjusting that. So as far as a timeline, it's likely going to take the better part of a year, the school year, to get everyone trained, because that mental health awareness, everybody needs to be trained in that. So it's going to, it may take a while. I don't know if those programs possibly could be even available online, but we're exploring that.
So then, there would be the need for the training for all school personnel, is what it said. So it's kind of like a mandate that we have from the state, and have we been provided the resources to do that? And then what would be the mechanism to actually train all school personnel? Are we going to do Train the Trainer, or?
Yes.
Okay.
The resource part, no. The, unfortunately, no. There are some, of course, some funding for the mental health aspect, but yes, the training piece is that ideally, we want to have people trained as trainers, that we have those folks that here.
So this might even be a question for Mr. Blerton, but then how is that going to impact our budget? Having, you know, having the mandate to do this and not being provided the resources? So I see Lori coming up here, so she probably has.
Do you mind if I?
Nope.
Mr. Parfit and I have gotten to know each other very well. Part of our mental health allocation will include training. So in addition to the threat assessment, Train the Trainer, that Mr. Parfit is working on, that will be covered through the mental health allocation. The Florida Department of Education has... The Florida Department of Education has indicated that throughout the 1819 school year, they will be selecting and/or developing the mental health awareness training for all staff. And at our state meeting, they've indicated that they're either going to provide districts a short list from which to choose, or they're developing a, what they call the light version of the eight-hour youth mental health first aid training. Youth mental health first aid, as Mr. Parfitt indicated, is an eight-hour in-person training, 25 people at a time. And so they cap the classes. And so the Department of Education has indicated that they're trying to develop a light version of it so that all staff can be in compliance on an annual basis. And we have looked at, in our mental health allocation, tentatively setting aside money in case we have training expenses that go along with that. In addition, we are looking at a grant, and we will be applying for it to implement youth mental health first aid for those who want the deeper dive into that eight-hour training because it would pay for substitutes and some of that release time for staff members to have not only the compliance light training, but also a really more well-developed training for those that desire to do that. So we have a lot of what-ifs, but in the meantime, we are looking at the mental health allocation has to cover some of those training costs, even when we're not quite certain what that'll look like. And the DOE is slated to release some further technical assistance. We're just getting a little close to our deadline, so I hope that helps.
Thank you very much.
Board members, we are a little bit over our 20-minute allotted time. Are you okay if we continue with this subject, or do you want me to move on?
Fine.
Okay, continue. Any other?
No, thank you very much.
Dr. Cockle?
Well, I just had a question. This is for Mr. Martin. Where are we with developing the policies? In several places, it required new policies in place for?
There are requirements for policies in the bill with respect to threat assessment teams, which Mr. Parfitt addressed. I have not gone forward with attempting to develop those policies. I assume that staff and time would be presenting those for review.
Do we have a timeline for that?
The statute is effective the 1st of July, so the policy should be at least prepared and being advanced by the time the school starts.
Secondly, the procedures for sharing of information among organizations that deal, especially in the mental health area, has been such a taboo thing in the past. Have we started the process of working with those groups to figure out what and how we're going to, we have, okay, good.
I have two questions, if I may. Mr. Parfitt, the school security specialists, is there any uniformity across the district regarding our expectations of what they do on the campuses? And is there any uniformity with regard to their training?
You're talking about the folks that are currently in the schools? There started to be a uniformity of training about a year or so ago, to my understanding, but they have all not completed that training. The local police academy here did develop about a 24-hour training, I believe, for those individuals, and probably a third of them have completed it.
Is there benefit, in your opinion, to having district-wide training and expectations of our school security specialists?
Absolutely, yes.
Just to give you a little bit of background on that, that was something that Mr. Dobson had started. It was at the request of, there were some retired law enforcement officers that had actually taken these positions as security specialists, and had approached him to develop that type of training. So we had worked with our public service academy to do that, and they were in the process of training. I know his goal at the time was to train all of our safety and security specialists in our schools for that very purpose. So I'm sure that, you know, Mr. Parfitt and Mr. Deming will take a look at that and continue because we certainly would want to see uniformity across the district. The other piece that's important in terms of uniformity is just, we do have a dress code for those folks, and so they do have uniforms that we do expect them to wear. That is something, then, when Mr. Dobson came on board, it was not necessarily consistent across the district. And I know that the Safety and Security Department has worked toward the goal of making sure that we have compliance so that they're easily identified.
Great.
And then you mentioned hurricane preparedness. Where do we stand in terms of training for our principals and our staff to get ready for?
That's the one thing we've locked down a little bit more with the EOC. Our first training for all shelters and their, we've also named sister schools for every shelter, so there'll be more than just the people at that school. And the first training is June 1st with the EOC.
And then like?
And then just wanted to say on that, Mr. Deming, correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the things about the sister schools is that it also, I think, provides an opportunity to provide a rotation and relief to the main school in the case of a hurricane. We saw that last, this past year where we did not have that. Some of our principals, I know Dottie Whitaker, Sue Zeller, to name a couple of them, put in tremendous hours, as did others, of course, but that was another reason behind the identification.
Absolutely, that's what it is. And it's mainly for after the hurricane. We're calling it the B Team. And if they, people that need relief, the B Team will have been trained, and they will come in and take over that school and give some people some relief, which obviously, as you know, because you were in one of the shelters, a lot of schools got no relief at all, and there was really no one trained to help. But the first training, it's the first year we've been out in front of it quite as much as we are now, but is June 1st, and the EOC is actually doing the training. The good thing about that is we will be able to see what they want, but we will also know what they will provide, which, you know, we came up a little short last time on that.
And I think that's my next question. What about food? What about garbage bags? What about toilet paper? Are we expected to provide that, or will they provide that?
Going on over in the June 1st meeting, and the answer is probably yes.
There's an inter-local agreement that's drafted, it's ready to go forward, that addresses a lot of those issues, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other board comments? Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Now we move on to public comment. Is there anyone in the auditorium that would like to speak during public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to board member comments. Mrs. Morgan? I have none. Dr. Cockle? Ms. Fisher?
Yes, thank you. I want to thank Will for being here and reporting on behalf of the Student Advisory Committee. I also want to say that I was honored to participate in three graduations this past weekend, Cape Coral Tech College, Cape Coral High School, and Ida Baker High School. And it was indeed an honor and very inspiring to hear the graduation speeches. So, and I just want to say thanks to our students, thanks to our staff who prepared the kids for graduation and continued to care for our students as they come in, and I wish everybody a happy, healthy summer break. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. I have none. Dr. Atkins?
Just a couple of brief comments. You know, we did have Ed Matthews here today, and just wanted to point out, you know, he, again, like a lot of our principals, did an excellent job with the graduations. But one of the things that really impressed me with Mr. Matthews that I think you saw today, I also saw it on display at the graduation, and that is, he interacts extremely frequently with students and knows a lot about their backgrounds and their goals and aspirations. And so as we're going through the graduation, often he would turn and say, this kid is going in, you know, has got a welding certificate, is going to go do here, this kid's going to the Naval Academy, this kid is, so that was just kind of something that added to that graduation that I thought was really, really kind of neat. There was a question from a board member regarding the Benita Springs High School and the Benita Springs Utilities that was brought up today. And just so all board members are aware, there are two sites that are really, and Mr. Moore is here if we have any additional questions, but they're unusable pieces of that piece of property that we're exchanging for the fees that is associated with the Benita Springs Utilities of $82,000. This land is unusable, but it is usable to them, and so they're going to place wells that will lead to their treatment plant for potable water. So that's what, that's going to be used. And I did ask, the question was related, is this a fair exchange for the value of that property? And it really is not property or a piece of that property that we can really use at all. So, yeah, we do believe this is a good value for us, and so it's a good partnership, and that's what's being brought forward tonight. Also, just a couple of exciting things going on in Academic Services, just to brag on a little bit with Dr. Creel and her team. First of all, she mentioned to me today in our individual meeting about the use of SAT scores, concordance scores, to meet the graduation requirement for students, and happily reported that we've had approximately 275 students that pass the SAT and, as a result, are meeting those requirements. And in addition to that, the innovative approach here goes further than just our traditional high schools, but also they reached out to our charter schools, which are also part of our district's graduation rate. So I just want to express, you know, great job on the part of Academic Services to really make sure our students are meeting the requirements. And that's going to have a significant impact and positive impact on our graduation rate moving forward to this year. So that's some really great news. In addition to that, she's been working with her team again, along with Mr. Martin and Uni Hyen with Florida Gulf Coast University. We have the Memorandum of Understanding, I think, pretty much set. It's on Dr. Martin's desk, as I understand, and so we are making significant progress there. Real excited about that lab school concept, and we'll be reporting more about that as we move forward. Just want to give you an update.
Great, thank you, and thank you for getting the Benita Springs info. Appreciate that. Thank you. Attorney Martin?
Yes, just one thing, a little further clarification. The question that Dr. Cockle asked, the School Safety Act actually only establishes one requirement for adoption of a school board policy, and that is with respect to the establishment of the threat assessment team in each school and outlining those teams' responsibilities. And the bill requires that the Department of Education Office of Safe Schools develop a model policy for adoption. So we'll need to wait until that model policy is in place for the board to take action. That's all I have, thank you.
Great. Any items for good of the order? Okay, so we'll be back here again at 5 o'clock for longevity awards, and one of the teachers receiving an award is my son T's teacher this year. She deserves Teacher of the Year slash Hero Award for teaching him for the year. I can't really point her out in front of all the other teachers, but she is a superstar. Whoever's in charge of teachers, Susan Gower is her name, she's fantastic. She has taken a child, who I love very much but struggled with, and returned a different child to me at the end of the year. She really has. He's a completely different person, and it's because of her influence. So she's awesome. We'll be back here at 5 o'clock for that, and then we'll be back in at 6 o'clock for an action meeting. Seeing no other business, we're adjourned.